There's no.
6:00 PM, Tuesday, December 12th. This is the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. Calling it to order now, Mr. Nutt's gonna do the invocation and Mr. Graham's gonna do the pledge. Please stand.
Dear God, thank this day that you've given us. And Lord, as we come to you tonight, we ask that you be with those families and communities that were hit so hard by the recent storms. And Lord, we know it'll be a long road to recovery, but please comfort them and guide them. Dear God, we ask that you continue to watch over our first responders and men and women in uniform and protecting our freedom here at home and abroad. And dear Lord, be with all those countries that are war-stricken right now. Let them find a way to stop the war and to bring back peace, dear God. And dear God, as we enter the season, we're reminded of your son that you gave. Let's hope that one day we'll have a home with you in heaven, dear Lord. And we ask you to forgive us for what we've all shown. Christ on your throne. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
We got one change to the agenda tonight at the request of the stag. They do not want players on the agenda tonight. That's number seven. We get a motion on the change. Oh, there's two changes. Number five should say, instead of preliminary plant, should say construction drawing. So we could get a motion on the changes to the agenda.
I make a motion. Will you make those two changes to our agenda?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. There are a couple of housekeeping things for the minutes from last time. Mr. Noah Burchell's name was spelled incorrectly as O add. That needs to be corrected. And the minutes had land back parking instead of land bank parking. So it's just a couple of spelling errors that needed to be corrected in those. Get a motion on the approval of the changed minutes.
Make a motion for corrections.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move to number five, Sugar Creek Town Home Construction Drawings. So.
Construction plant purchased for 2.21 acres identified on tax map, 133, parcel 9.06, located on Sugar Creek Lane for the construction of 16 townhomes. Property is owned all three high-density residential. The owner of this property is Mr. Alan Blevins in the African Asian Visionary R and D office.
I think we had some questions from back in September when it was originally on here. And I think from talking to Will earlier, they have provided the like plan?
Yes, we've seen the plan.
Okay. Nothing on the sign ordinance yet, but that can wait.
And that's something that's probably a good item to get condition of approval so that first can review that.
And then the wall meters of Mount Pleasant Power, which would just be a condition of approval also.
Would it be helpful if we kind of go through where we are on this?
Yeah.
And then they can.
Those are the only three notes we had from September. So if there's anything new.
For the zoning, there's some additional issues with utilities.
Okay.
All right. So I can go ahead and lead the discussion, but I think there'll be several people to chime in. So we've had a letter of availability issued on this property that has been. Conclusion is that there needs to be a 10-inch water line that goes from Brookside Drive down North Main to the termination of the T-Dot project by the bridge. Our engineers say that there is any 10-inch line to support Mr. Blevins' project, and that needs to go the whole way. The city of Mount Pleasant would like to have a 16-inch line to go all the way through in order to make sure that we don't have any. Get him speaking, engineer for a second, but it doesn't affect our flow going forward. So we would like to have a 16-inch line to keep it cohesive all the way through. So what we have proposed, or what we would propose, is that the city pay the betterment cost of the difference between 10 inches and 16-inch line for that distance all the way across. We have had preliminary conversations with Mr. Blevins and his attorney and the engineer about how we would go about structuring that, but that's something that the City Commission would approve. I think for y'all's, where we are, you could approve the plans conditional on a water line going across the property from, again, Brookside Drive down Main to the termination of the T-Dot project at the bridge. It'd be a 16-inch line with the developer being responsible for 10 of those inches. And then conditional on us reaching a developer agreement where we discuss cost sharing and how that would be paid for going forward. So that is the, it's kind of, from that point of view, kind of two conditions. One, that the water line be 16 inches and go all the way across with the developer being responsible for 10 of those inches and city paying the betterment. And then two, we entering into a mutually agreeable developers' agreement regarding costs.
Yeah. That would go in for the City Commission. And just for the record, we do have our water engineer Cory Borum is on the line as a Zoom call if we have any questions.
What size line is proposed now in the plans, which we haven't looked at these in two, three months?
I take that.
Well, that's one of the set of plans that we reviewed, showed an 8-inch line.
Gerald, would you like to speak on that?
I will.
Gerald, you know more about the plans than any of us.
I'm Gerald V., WS Engineers and Surveyors, representing the climbing project. At the time that we originally received the water availability, it had said it would be, you know, it would be a size between an eight and a 16. We showed an eight. They have later done a more thorough determination saying it would need to be a 10. So that's why we were showing an eight.
And if it would replace that one.
Correct. Yeah, I understand that. Yeah. And it'd really be a 16 once we get everything the cost sharing.
And part of the reason why this plan, I think, is not updated to show that, is part of the developers' agreement would be who designed that 16-inch line.
It'd be our attorney, our attorneys, our engineers. And so that's why it's not completed at this point.
Like Kate said, Cory Borum is on Zoom, and he could explain why that is.
That'd be nice. I mean, if we don't have any calculations here in front of us showing why it's needed or anything else, so.
Yeah, several people in the room have access to an email that he sent out late Friday. But so Cory, do you want to just comment briefly on the requirement for the 10-inch line and how that impacts the city's water system?
Sure. As you guys know, I mean, there's issues in the system right now. We're filling the industrial tank to the north and water flows from south to north. There's not an existing water line on Sugar Creek Lane right now as it is. So that's needed regardless, obviously. As you get to, as you get up to Canaan, water, the transmission of water next down to a single 8-inch line. So knowing that we have issues right now with transmitting water from south to north through a single 8-inch line, it only, in regard, this is, I'm gonna separate the Sugar Creek, right? Because we know we need that water line. There's no, there's no water line existing right now. As you go up to Main Street, though, the water on the west side, I guess, of Main Street, all that transmits through that 8-inch line to knowingly add additional demand to the system, whether it be south or north of that location, and not upsize it, would only contribute to the problem that we currently have with filling the industrial tanks. So the 10-inch is a minimum to accommodate for the new developer. 16 is actually recommended, obviously, to accommodate for future growth and development in the industrial area. So that's the logic behind what's needed.
Cory, what about the asbestos line? If you said that, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, you're exactly right. I mean, we, there is, there's a lot of old asbestos line in the system right now. I think the city, especially in the northern part where the industrial development is, has taken the precedent to not let new development connect to those lines because the structural integrity is such that when you do that, it essentially creates a problem, right? Because there is no integrity. Those lines are 50-plus years old. So I think the idea is, is when a new development comes in and does connect to those lines, it's been the precedent of the city to replace those sections of line. Not necessarily replace all of it, obviously, but those sections that impact those developments.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's certainly, those two, the combination of those two things, that played in, obviously, to a role in this. But more so than that was the actual demand added to the system and the existing problems that are currently in place.
Thank you.
Well, the water line part is, this is where I was the field director here, the line north on 243 for going toward Columbia's asbestos. It's my understanding T-Dot is replacing that bridge there, replacing that portion of the water line. You wouldn't let anybody tile on that asbestos, so that's the only way to get them water, is what it sounds like.
We're talking about a conditional approval with conditions on it that we'll be working on.
And we know that's not the planning commission's preference to have conditions, but because of this complex water line issue, we felt like this needed to come to you in this way rather than us trying to resolve it.
Or deferring it or putting it off and slowing down what they're trying to do.
Makes sense.
I agree. We're gonna make a bigger mess if we don't fix the issues now. So why make a bigger mess?
And what we've talked about would have those conditions on it. Also, we'd have the condition to address all comments that were made by staff. That would be.
The lighting plan.
Hour.
Really, the water's a bigger issue than what the staff comments are.
But the construction drawings also would have things internally that would have to be changed to match.
Right.
This condition, is my understanding. Is that right, Chris?
That's correct. Excuse me. Interior water line, I think we had discussed, correct me if I'm wrong, Gerald, was to put vaults in place of the meters on the east side of the drive going into the townhomes.
My understanding that Cory will do the design.
Yes. And that's why it's not there. Yeah.
That was probably the bigger change. You just want to make sure that you recall that conversation.
So if they can't work out the cost sharing with the commission, what's that move for project?
I think that would, I mean, that would be up to them. That would be a condition of approval. So if we couldn't all work that out, then it's only approved if that happens. But if it doesn't happen, then it's not.
And that's a what if, but I know that the city wants the project to happen. So we'll look towards it. Yeah.
And we have had preliminary conversations, been more than once, about how that would work. It, you know, I think we're 70% in agreement of how it would go forward.
And I think most of the stuff you're gonna have in front of you going forward, it's always gonna have, none of them are gonna be the same. There's always gonna be a few things that have to get worked out.
Any other discussion? Anybody else here wish to speak on this?
Chris, was all these notes, it's just 'cause it's been so long, was all these notes taken care of too? Were they addressed, through all that?
Not, not totally.
That's what she said, that all staff, all staff comments would have to be.
So it's the signs and the meter walls.
And the meter, yeah, with the power companies. The first one has been, the lighting plan has been submitted, is my understanding, right?
So it would be the, those three, basically.
Anybody here?
And they have to come back with a final five.
Right.
Anything else we missed, Will?
I guess everything.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the construction documents contingent upon the water line and working in mutual agreement with the city and the signed signage plan and the requirements of the Mount Pleasant Power Company.
Is that all the notes?
Did I do that?
I believe that's what I've got.
And just to be clear for our records, like, the water line that is going from Brookside all the way to the termination point at the bridge, is that right?
Brookside to, yeah, to the bridge.
And the mutually agreement, developers' agreement would be working off the betterment cost and any cost sharing.
Playing a 10-inch and a 16-inch line.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my motion.
I have a second.
I'll stick with it.
It's a roll call.
Sandra Collis?
Yes.
Bobby Nutt?
Yes.
John Hunter?
Yes.
Jennifer Graham?
Yes.
Is that all you're gonna speak on, Gerald? You signed up. Okay. In case, I didn't know if there's something else you wanted to say. All right, number six, McNeese Properties. Go ahead, sir.
I have a back combination request here. McNeese property, 1.3 acres identified on tax map, 1330, group D, parcel 9, 10, 11, located on South Port Route. For the purpose of this plant is to combine previous tax map, 1330, group D, parcel 7, 8, 2, 1, D book R 2549, page 479, and R 2573, page 812. The property is owned all one intensity. The property is, the property is McNeese. The owner of the property is McNeese Properties, LLC, in African Asian conditions.
Any discussion on this? It looks like it's just a cleanup of what's already on the.
He wanted to speak to it, yeah.
This one is a little difficult just because there's not previously recorded flats for it. So the apartments were proved a few years ago, considering the entire tax parcel as it's shown as the boundary of the property. This is essentially, the surveyor's saying that they're combining lots that are recorded in the D book, but we can't find records of them anywhere else. So I'm not disputing what the surveyor's saying. It's just, how do we know what's left for the apartment property itself? So what I've suggested for conditions for you to consider is to plat the remaining property along with this so that we have clear divisions of what's left and what's being consolidated into this new lot, and demonstrating that the apartment complex will comply with the zoning requirements as it was approved. And then the final comment is related to sewer access. They're not showing the sewers area. Sewers in the area, but we're not sure how far it is to the public main, and just showing that it will be extended to and through this property even further to the public main. So those are the conditions we suggested. Happy to answer any questions related to that. This month, we've had a number of flats that just don't have good title information.
No history, yeah.
Welcome to Murray County.
This is dealt with often. You kind of feel for the surveyor trying to pull this together, but I think plating the entire property will help. So.
Yes, sir.
Namon.
Tracy Saber. I'm the land surveyor.
Okay.
The property was combined for tax purposes only. It never was, it was purchased after. The apartments were well-approved. It's not a part of the site plan of the apartments. He just, Mr. McNeese just combined it all for tax purposes, and what the county did was just dropped all of the references. So I had to go through and get all the references. He's actually got a couple of other properties that's in the same fold as that, but pulling it apart. It never was by title a part of this property. It never, never connected to it. They just, according to the county, if they combine it by tax purposes, they killed those parcel numbers. So it is confusing. The sewer addressing that one, he's given an easement to his existing sewer line, which is a private line, just for that property. So it does, and I don't think he wants to give access to anything on the other side of property. He just wants, if there's a house built there, he just wants access for that.
So the history gets wiped out. That's.
It is. It's very confusing.
Yeah.
And it takes a while.
I was trying to sympathize my mouth. I just wanted to say, hey, I don't want to pay taxes on so many pieces of property. This is what I'll get. And I requested that, and they didn't tell me, they warned me or nothing, and just did it.
Right. And that happens a lot. There's a difference between a tax parcel and an actual creative line.
About title, there's three lots there. And then that's why I said formal on the references, because of the tax map reps, because that's how I've had to go find them, was what they were previously. But there was three lots. Two of them were on one deed, so it was really technically one lot. But I showed all three, and then the other was on a separate deed. And then they never combined the deeds. They never put anything together. It was just made one big parcel on the tax map and dropped it all. But all the deeds and title wise, it's still the same.
Do you have any concerns, Cory?
No, I don't know if this is a change in our suggestion, or?
No, I mean, if we could, and Chris, I think you reviewed the apartment site plan, and could you detail if this portion of the McNeese property was included in that apartment site plan?
Did not see that. Not this. I was, something was not in the system. It was made with, you know, submitted with the town, excuse me. But I did not see any electronic.
They were, I mean, I can tell you, they went out of park.
Okay.
You purchased that after.
I purchased, I purchased the first new property, and then I got a site plan, got it approved, and then I started construction. And then a guy bought the land right next to my property just before I bought the property. And I approached him to buy his. I just wanted to cut it was bordering. And then he said, yes. So he sold me two tracks. And then another lady, I saw another little piece of land in the very front. I called her, and I told her, hey, it's just a girl with a piece of dirt. And she sold it to me. And so there's three tracks there. And he, he just put them all together and deed.
Well, so are the, is the zoning different in the big one in the adults?
All the signings are the same.
I don't think that's an issue. Then what, what?
That part's not an issue.
Yeah. If that's. Yeah, I think not only the remaining comment would be number three related to sewer access, even though these are existing.
Number six, if you left. Number three is the property lines. You had a different set? This was November 29th. Yeah.
26.
Okay. That's all the thing we got.
Okay, but the sewer.
Yeah, okay, the sewer.
Yeah. So my remaining concern would be the sewer access. Is it a service line, basically, that's been shown to serve?
It's what was approved by the site plan for the apartments, is a manhole right there, and it shows the easement from the property over to it. So I don't know exactly what size it was grabbing.
Was that city sewer?
City sewer was extended to.
Well, I built the sewer. I paid for the sewer. So hopefully, city can.
Well.
Yeah, they do the labor, you get. And it wouldn't have the water now.
If you can maintain it, you can.
So when we're planning lots, we have to make sure to have either access to sewer or aesthetic thing. So that's something we have to do.
I was asking, was that manhole private or public?
Yeah.
That would make the difference.
According to them, it's a private manhole that's coming out at that angle.
Could you dedicate that?
The way it was explained to me, which was, everything was verbal back in the days. I built sewer, and the city takes it over. If I build water line, I gotta keep it fixed if it turns up. Basically, the towels was explained to me. Public sewer is a public sewer, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's the way it was explained to me, but I don't have any documentation like that.
Somewhere would have to transition to private at some point.
Typically. And maybe north of that.
Well, this is simply the fact of running a service line to a manhole. That's what the easement's for. It's not meant to try to, because if you try to run the easement across the property, you just literally cut the property in half. And that could be the best buildable spot for the property. So it's kind of a double-edged sword when you're trying to say extend it through there. This was, that easement's only meant for the service line to the manhole.
If he wants to build a house, I'm giving him permission to tie it to the sewer that's on my property.
Right. Along with that, they have shown public utility, even on the frontage of the road, which could be beneficial for the lot and could extend sewer to the east. Typically, that would be constructed by the developer and then dedicated to the city. This is a little bit unique situation since they would prefer to access the sewer at a different spot, just to save cost since it's there.
And again, it's cleaning up. It is. It's a cleanup. He's trying to get it to a buildable lot and make sure it has all requirements.
Any other questions, comments?
You good with it, Mommy? I don't, I mean, it really, it comes to the city of, where they, easement right of ways means protect if somebody over here was to be able to get access down to the sewer. That's the intent of the law. So if this is, this isn't public, and that doesn't do any good, it does for this property, but not for any future. And I don't know, grade-wise, I don't know if the easement or access across the front, that'd be for engineering or the city to say, yeah, we reviewed it, we're good with it. What's your, are y'all, are y'all good with that approach that they got?
Utilities. On the utility department comment. I can't speak to the design of the sewer.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. It could be private, something up there. Then you have no, you know, city has really no access.
Is this something we need to look at next month to get some more information, or?
Kate, do you have anything?
I mean, I don't know if we've looked at what has been recorded, and we don't have anything there, but it's something that it either needs to be made public, because it should be the city's responsibility.
Yeah, and to protect McNeese.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So the easement, we're just asking for an easement. We're not asking to tie into the sewer. Would that all have to be, would that all have to be worked out just like we're going to put a sewer line in to get the easement? Would that?
Yeah, typically. We would ask for that sewer to be extended across your property.
You'd ask the sewer to be extended?
Yes.
Because I'm just asking for an easement.
I know, I understand that you're just asking for an easement for, for future development and to make it more accessible to other users past you.
Yeah.
Typically, we would ask it to be extended across property. Now, that can be done a couple of different ways. It could be done across the frontage, it could be done, you know, whatever the preference of the utility company is. My, my recommended condition is just simply to extend sewer across this property with the appropriate easement as determined by Mount Pleasant Utilities. And then if you needed to adjust setbacks, go ahead and do that and not conflict with the sewers.
Well, the existing sewer, public sewer is down at the intersection, which is on the other side of the property down the following hill. If I understand correctly.
It doesn't come up to.
His line goes through, goes through the apartments and ties down.
On the rainy streets.
On rainy street.
The other option is to go under South 4 Road.
We're not.
It's insane because the manhole that, that we've established is one he would tie into is the highest manhole on the property and his line would run downhill too bit. So it would just be an extension of that system, which I, I don't know the legal aspect of it. I'm just saying to, for me to sell my property to another individual, the city would make one of us extend sewer. Would we cry that? Would require me to extend sewer to sell him with an easement on it? The city would actually do that?
That's what is typically done.
What we just were doing with water on the thing before you.
Problem we're trying to avoid.
So it's three lots right now. By, by title, it's three lots. And so you would prefer them to stay non-compliant to the zoning.
Not at all.
But I mean, we're trying to fix this and do that. There's got sewer, most, most of these I do with is you gotta have water, power and sewer. And we've got water, power and sewer available. It's, we're not asking to build another apartment or anything out of the ordinary. It's just a buildable lot for a house. And it, and for a property owner to take on the burden of running a sewer line, main, up to that property is overburdening for a property owner of any type, really. I mean, if, if you say you just wanted to build a house next door on a vacant lot and the city says you gotta build a main and sewer line up, that's an overburdened cost for a normal individual.
I don't disagree with you. I would say that when the apartments were being approved, that was probably a better chance to extend that public sewer main along the frontage to further certain people east of you.
But the city didn't want to do that at that time.
I think we talked about it. It was, eventually it was not required.
Wasn't required.
Understood.
I got, then let's talk about another suggestion. I've got another manhole that's also on the upper side that run down to the exact same spot that is unconstructed on the northern point part of the property. What if I gave the city an easement to tie into that manhole to extend to the same exact area you're talking about?
That might be a good option.
I'm feeling like our sewer engineers need to take a look at it.
I, I would think, I'm not going to be comfortable making a decision tonight. I would think our best bet is to get, get the powers that beat together and figure out really what, who owns the sewer and really what needs to be done.
Yeah. And hindsight, had I known some of the, the issues that could even be bigger and maybe there's an easier route, I would bring in barge and have them take a look at it and see what they recommend. And I don't mind the city doing that and getting involved in that. I just can't, I can't answer it.
I would rather do it right than sit here and stumble over it because.
We want to help you, but we gotta have some more information.
I don't want you to have problems down the road.
Well, we don't see you have problems down the road.
Or in either corner.
The city's okay with not firing. The city's okay with not.
Yeah. I guess I just want, I want somebody that is invested in advising us on our sewer system to give me that. And typically with a lot of these things, we don't send them on to our engineer, but I think maybe this one should be.
What kind of delay is that going to be?
It would be January 9th is the next.
We'll bear a note maybe.
Yeah.
So the engineer will have an answer or whatever.
Oh, I, I would think so. We'll get with them right tomorrow. And I apologize, Bradley, I didn't realize how confusing this was and that there maybe be another option that might be better, but I think we just need to have, I don't want it to be.
Well, what if I, what if we say no? Well, I mean, I'm just asking. What if we say no, but I want to sell the land with just an easement of my property, both the properties that I own.
What we've got to figure out is what the utilities.
If you're going to tie into our sewer system.
Are they okay servicing this one line?
Yeah.
Right.
Private manhole.
Right.
If they are okay, what I've got, what my responsibility is, is to highlight potential issues down there. That's where I'm coming from.
I'll talk a little bit.
The other option, I don't know if it's a good option or not. It would be aesthetic if they say no to down in the manhole. I don't know if the sewer.
I think once the sewer engineer sees it, it's going to be obvious.
You're probably right, yeah. We just gotta know.
I mean, I feel like this should have been brought to them beforehand and I apologize for that. The more, more I'm talking about it, like we need to.
I might be oversimplifying the problem, but if the end game is to make sure that there is a buildable lot. To be a buildable lot, you have to have access to sewer. So the missing piece to the puzzle is.
Well, the easement was supposed to be that.
Right. But we're trying to figure out if that is good enough or if it needs to be an actual line, I think. And those are questions that unfortunately, like we had this guy on Zoom, we have another version of him that would answer those questions for sewer.
Yeah.
So that would be the question that we would submit to Matthew and that would come back with.
We've addressed it on the plat. Not necessarily just running a service line. If somebody needed to put a manhole on the property, which was an eight inch sewer going to that and tying into that one, you know, we kind of addressed that in the notes saying, you know, they tired up, they look into whatever they do through there, it gets approved and authority that, that this all is good. So we, we didn't limit and just say we're going to run just a service line to it, but we left it open to where the easement will come all the way, if they had to put another manhole on them.
And I really wouldn't even mind approving it based on what the engineer's going to say, but I don't know what the engineer's going to say.
Yeah.
But as for the, any major sewer work for the future, I mean, that's what we talked with Chris and said add the easement at the front so it can come up through the road, but running one through the middle of a property, trying on the day you create it, it's not a good idea. It doesn't, you know, what if that's the best buildable spot on the lot and then you just ruined it? And in this case, it probably would be right where the structure would be. Like I said, engineer could probably figure out.
Yeah, hopefully it's so. Easy greasy, we just need to know. We just didn't get any feedback, but I think there's additional questions that are coming up.
In my email, I did send all the electronic files and came back, no comment, so.
Yeah. I think we're hearing other things that are coming up today.
I think they probably ought to look at it a little closer.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially since all that property is zoned R3, it's not necessarily, they could build something besides one house on it if they wanted to.
Right.
Because I mean, it's all zoned for high density and, and you're welcome to say you're
not going to do it, but once it's zoned for that, that's what it's on.
Site plan and determining final plans, all that too. So a lot of that comes into that also, but.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to get there and put, that's my.
Yeah, I think they just need to decide, are you going to require it to go all the way across, decide a public manhole to easement work?
It sounds like you're leaning towards deferring this until the engineer can answer it.
I would prefer that. That's, if somebody wants to make a motion otherwise, or however they want to make it, we'll entertain most.
I'll make the motion.
I'm making a motion to refer it to look at sewer engineers providing.
That's no problem.
You can put it in.
Make motion to the first.
I'd like to heads up when these near to an open.
Yeah, well, that's what I said, I'll keep it posted.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Number eight.
Jim Brown.
Final plat combination request from Jim, from Jim Brown located at 209 North Main Street.
Stay up there.
133J Group H, parcel 13.00, zero point 34 acres, zone CM, commercial neighborhood. And 101 Park Avenue, tax, tax, you know, 13, 133J Group H, parcel 11.00, zero point 22 acres, zone CVC, commercial downtown. Both property is owned, both properties are owned by Jim Brown. And the applicant is in the.
In the red.
And he sold it.
Well, I mean, we may have an old set of easy answers, everything.
Everything is clarified. This is another example of older properties being reconfigured to serve the term home. The great news is that we've got all our utilities taken care of. You will see some buildings that are, that look like they're over setback lines, but those are legal non-conforming structures, nothing new. This does clean up some issues from the past, but won't be thrown off by buildings that are shown in the front yard or the side yard. Those are historic structures and legal to continue to operate. It's really just amending a property line to move the backyard from the Park Avenue lot, add it to the one that fronts. It doesn't change zoning. We've got two different voting districts here. Doesn't anything affect zoning or use, it's just amending.
Any questions?
Cause I sold that house. What's going on?
Any discussion? Or motion?
Make a motion to the board.
On a favor, motion carries.
Number nine, we got all business?
All business.
Uh, other business, ten.
Thank you, guys. No other business?
Uh, board staff comments.
Pardon my throat. Uh, one staff comment. What would be an acceptable time for the package?
I like to have mine to Friday before we're personally, just so I can have the weekend to review them. And that's, package, right?
Yeah.
I mean, what, what works for everybody else.
Yeah, the packet to me, like, I just like to have the weekend to, to take a look at it, but I want to get the agenda as soon as it goes out to the public.
Right. It would be nice to get the, the announcement without having to.
It's usually reported by email.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, the announcement by email is fine.
Yeah. Once it's emailed out to the paper, email it to us. Cause I can't stand when somebody mentions something they saw in it and I don't know about it.
Cause it was in the paper.
Yeah. Cause I, I mean, I read the paper online, they don't have that.
Sometimes I can't find it on the city website, but it's usually my fault because I, I, it's like in a, I just can't find it.
But we are talking about changing the process and slowing it down a bit. We feel like we'll rush to get things to you and get comments to you. So we're looking at having like possible study sessions or something so that we have, everybody has more time and you're not pressured first time you're seeing it in a meeting like this. So we'll bring all that to you and you'll, we'll want you to give us feedback on that. But I know that's just a, what Chris is talking about is just a small piece of the larger puzzle that we're looking at.
Yeah.
It's going to get worse, really better.
We're just trying to narrow down and back, backtrack our process. Man, I want, how many days would be allowable for you to review the package? And at that point, we're going to start setting meetings up so that we can discuss these items beforehand.
In-house, before you do, yeah.
So I want to.
Probably about the second time that Will has looked at something, it's probably about the time I'd be ready to talk about it because you're going to give them the initial list of what's wrong. They're going to respond and then we're going to get that second list. And then that's probably the time we really need to sit down and talk about what's acceptable for the city or, or what's not, or.
Both sides of comments.
Both sides of comments. They've had a chance to read the review, comment on it, and he's reviewed it again. Whoever's reviewed it again, that could apply to the sewer people, the utility people. After that second back and forth, it's probably a good time to try to look at it.
Okay.
I mean, if you come in here and there's eight or nine things that still aren't cleaned up, it's, it's, it's really waiting.
It's hard on all of us.
It's hard on all of us because all you're going to do is kick it down the road or vote no, more than likely, so.
So Friday, Friday before the meeting.
Once you have all the comments addressed.
We have all the comments addressed and I can send a hard packet out, each one. Do you want an electronic copy?
I don't. I don't have anything really big enough to look at it on most of the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, yeah, I don't know that my email server would make it.
I'd have to send it in.
The upper something, right?
I don't want five or six emails. I like, I like spreading it out and looking at it.
What I do, I sit at a dining room table and just.
And then get my car and drive around if I need to.
Yeah, it does give us some time. If, if there's things in here, we could go, especially with the BZA, that we could actually go and, and look at where the lot is and what they're really requesting.
Yeah.
So it really helps to, right, so.
Very good.
Kate already alluded to it. I feel like it's a good time to kind of bring it up. The, the timeline or change in schedule that we've kind of talked about, it would be adding basically a month to everything, having a study session where you would, like tonight was a perfect example of stuff that we could have brought to you all the comments and all the issues, kind of had it at a study session and then try to finalize it before the next meeting.
Yeah. I don't think anybody works as quickly as we do and that's not necessarily a good thing.
It's not necessarily a good thing. You're correct.
Because we're, you know, we've had consistent meetings, we've had meetings on these every week, but it just turn around time is slower and so we end up having a meeting today with staff and saying, all right, what are the options that we can provide to this commission so that they can move forward today if they want to?
And that's really too late to be talking about it. I mean, that's almost, that's almost automatic in my book. And I totally agree with that. And I, I don't know that a study session will help, but I don't know that I'm willing to give up another night a week, a month. I mean, for, but I mean, if, if you think we need to, and if it's something really complicated, I think.
The big part of it is giving us more time too.
Right. I think it should be something that should be specially called.
Yeah, if there's some huge thing.
You know, most of this stuff, I mean, I don't know, it could have.
Like they used to have study sessions when we were dealing with the landfill.
Yeah. One, one thought could be that the bonus session could become a study session on the front end or.
Right. We, we could talk about new business tonight that's going to be on next month's agenda and I, I think that would totally be appropriate for me. I don't know if.
So that's the thought.
It's just like the trilogy people came in just to talk to us, you know, just to.
A hand drawn plan.
With a hand drawn plan, you know, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I, I don't know that I want to give up extra night a month just to come here and sit down for, for a volunteer position.
It won't, well, it's lacking. They started back, back several, plenty of years.
Were those paid positions up there? Were those paid positions up there?
Do planning commissions get paid?
Honestly, I don't think so.
I don't think they were. I know they're not in Columbia.
Those aren't. Those aren't.
So that's the thought.
It's just like the trilogy people came in just to talk to us, you know, just to.
A hand drawn plan.
With a hand drawn plan, you know, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I don't know that I want to give up extra night a month just to come here and sit down for a volunteer position.
It won't, well, it's a lot of things. They started that back several, like a year or something.
Were those paid positions up there? Were those paid positions up there?
Do plenty commissions get paid? I don't think they were. I know they're not in Columbia.
Those are.
Yeah.
I just don't know that I'm willing to give up another night, my family.
Another night for all of us.
It's another night for all of us, and that's. I do like being able to do some new business that's coming up next month in conjunction with this meeting, where people can actually be here.
Right.
If that works. And then you don't defer to the next month, you just have everything, you know it's coming, so.
All good ideas, so we'll be bringing more information to you on that.
It was pushed the packet back, so submit the plan, say June or January. Well, it'll go before a study session, but we will have December for vote. So it's, you just be behind, one, once the middle will take two months.
Yeah, and the study session, they're still doing it on the same night.
And we would have, we'll have to check and make sure that that timing is allowed with our zoning ordinance.
Right.
Just to make sure.
And to change anything requires an ordinance to do it, so that's two months of reading, so we're just in the very beginning of coming to you with suggestions.
I think it's great to be able to talk about some of the things beforehand, because we can't talk about them outside of here.
Right, exactly.
Combine would be.
Would be ideal.
So we'll double check the ordinance, go through the votes and.
That's good stuff. Any board comment? Gerald was the only one signed up to speak, and he said he didn't want to speak about anything else but that, so we get a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Don't move.